Okay, it's six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. So this is the February meeting of the Committee of the Whole, Administration and Finance, Township of Edersburg Cardinal. And before I start the meeting, I'd just like to acknowledge that we have Dave Grant, our Director of Operations, is here in a new capacity tonight. Dave will be acting as the CAO, the Acting CAO of the Township during the period of time that our full-time CAO, Deborah McKinstry, is way on a rather extended vacation. So Dave, wish you the very best in your five weeks as Acting CAO. Looking forward to working with you. And also like to acknowledge, and we're going to have presentation here, and I'll introduce them more completely at item number five on the agenda, but we have the representatives from our Broker of Record here tonight as well. So, moving on to item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Take Counselor Cameron and a seconder please, Counselor Dillavah. Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And moving to item three on the agenda, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof, are there any disclosures here this evening? Here are none, minutes will show that there were no disclosures. And item number four on the agenda is business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole, Administration and Finance meeting, and that's the meeting that was held on January the seventh. Is there any business arising from those minutes? None? Here are none. So hearing none, I'm about to move on to item number five on the agenda. And item number five on the agenda is the delegation and the presentation from BFL Canada. And so we have Lawrence McMullin here with us, our Broker of Record. And Mr. McMullin, I'll ask you please to introduce your colleague that's here with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight to discuss the municipal insurance program helped by my colleague Blair Hancock. And in between the two of us, we're going to try and give you an overview of what we're providing for you in the way of insurance coverages and insurance policies.
Now, the only thing I would say, Mr. McMullin, is that it's not a church, and we don't take a collection, so you're welcome to come a little closer to the front if you'd like.
We'll stand up here, so you can see the slide on our... We've given you a couple of handouts tonight. One is a profile of BFL, who we are and what we do for a living. And the second is a summary of the insurance policies we have in place for the municipality. So I'll just quickly give you a brief overview of BFL. So, BFL stands for Baron Francis Lorenzetti, who founded the firm as a one-man show back in Montreal in 1987. Today, we have over seven hundred employees from Vancouver to Halifax. We're not in Newfoundland yet, but we hope to get there soon. And really, we are insurance brokers, so we're not an insurance company. Our job is to negotiate insurance coverages on behalf of our clients. So we have access to the full range of the marketplace, and within that, we seek to provide and price insurance coverage on behalf of our clients, and also provide backup service, including claim support as well. As you can see from the background, we were actually, and BFL's story is a fantastic success story, we're now placing a billion dollars worth of insurance a year. So from right across, we also have international affiliations. We represent a lot of national associations in our office. We represent 4H and the Canadian, Blair and I had the pleasure of being a Saskatoon two weeks ago to do a presentation to the Board of 4H Canada as well. So one of our areas of expertise is municipal insurance. We have a team in our office in Vancouver, also in Toronto and Montreal as well, where we provide insurance services to municipalities across the country. Locally, in the area, we also represent Cornwall and Hawkesbury and Nation as our local representative within the municipal world. So in terms of the municipal insurance world, I mean, I'm sure everyone in this room deals with insurance brokers, but the world of municipal insurance in terms of the number of insurance brokers, you can count them on the fingers of one hand. There's a very few brokers that really have the expertise, the access to the insurance marketplace, and the backup support that is required to manage and provide municipal insurance services. The world, I guess the world is shrinking in a lot of ways because everything's getting smaller in number and larger in size, and our world is the same as well. So one of our major competitors, company called JLT, was just purchased by another large broker, and we think that has reduced the number of players from a broker point of view in the world. So it's certainly got to make, in some respects, it presents opportunity to us, but it also takes a player away from that world in terms of competitiveness and accessing the marketplace. In terms of the value-added services we provide, we do provide basically a risk transfer in terms of delivering a policy to you. We also provide risk management consulting and risk control consulting. I think over the years, we've brought people into the township to do inspections and to come back with recommendations as to how you best improve your procedures and protocols. As you know, we also are the insurance broker for the port, which is placed separately because it's not deemed to be a municipal risk, it's deemed to be a port risk. So the insurance on that is, we're not addressing that here tonight. We have in the past actually gone and addressed, I think Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you've been there in the past where we've actually addressed the port, that area of the world.
Specialized markets.
Yeah, it is a very specialized part of the world as well, yeah, for sure. So the world of municipal insurance, it's not like going out and buying car insurance or buying insurance on your house. There's very, very few insurance companies involved in this world that really have the appetite for it. London, the laws of London is a big, still a big market for us. They do a lot of municipal insurance, mostly on the liability side. Within the Canadian marketplace, there's companies like AIG, Travelers, Zurich's come back into the game again. So there's, but there really are not a lot of insurance companies that have the broad appetite to manage and underwrite municipal insurance risks. As you can see, the last page here, there's, this is the servicing. So Blair and I are really, I'll stick for him, but he's the good-looking guy at the front, and we've got a lot of people at the back. So we work on our Toronto team, and our Toronto team has about six people who are directly involved in placing and managing our municipal insurance portfolio around Ontario on a daily basis. We have a separate team that also does claim support and claims management as well. So all told, on an account of yours, there's probably, in any given twelve-month period within BFL, there's probably ten or twelve people who are actually touching your account on an ongoing basis in terms of providing delivery of the product and the paperwork and also the claim support. And I'm going to ask Blair to, I think, just quickly, I think my personal involvement with Edersburg, I think this goes back probably ten years. We've been involved, we first started the municipal insurance in eastern Ontario about twelve, fourteen years ago, and I think we've been, I've been personally been involved in Edersburg since at least 2009 and maybe beyond that, so it's been a very enjoyable experience working with the various councils and with the municipal staff as well.
Lawrence, if I could just interject here for the benefit of the new members of council, just to put it this way, back in 2009 about, I guess it was, we were getting a fair amount of pressure from some of the local insurance companies to place our municipal insurance with local brokers. So we went to an individual who had broad, general experience in the broker industry, and we said, "We're prepared to entertain brokers because we would like to appoint a broker of record who had enough markets to be able to place all of our risk as well as all the risk from the port." So the long and the short of it was, this individual contacted five or six brokers and invited them to come and make presentations to council. And I think as it was, only two ended up showing up to make the presentation before council. Now, I could be wrong, it might have been three. But in any case, when they made their presentation, it was quite obvious that it was only BFL that we were interviewing at that period in time that had access to the bigger markets that would take on the risk that we were, that we were subject to, including the risk from the port at that point in time. So that's how our relationship with BFL sort of got started. And I might want to say one other thing is that during the period of time that we've been with BFL, I've watched the premiums quite closely, and as each year's renewal comes along, I think the Broker of Record does a great deal of work for us negotiating new companies to cover our risk and is able to keep ratcheting our premium slightly down, although I don't know where we'll stand this year, and I'll let you go on from there.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. Thank you for the comments. I mean, in eastern Ontario, we are one of two brokers that actually deal in municipal insurance. There's no one else in the area, so I mean, if you're looking for out of the coast, you know, chances are you're going to find someone coming in from southern Ontario from Toronto. And you know, Edersburg is not a huge account, but in the municipal world, as you well know, you're not the city of Toronto, you're not the city of Hamilton, so you know, the appetite from brokers and from insurance companies as well is not that great. But from our point of view, Edersburg, it forms part of the pool of municipal clients that we have. So I think your rates are competitively priced based upon the buying part of the whole group. And certainly, one of the things we do on a regular basis is test the marketplace. So you know, there's insurers that come in and out of the game, but we want to make sure that you have long-term price stability and you're not going to get any sticker shocks. So I think the premiums have stayed more or less the same than I did bring the historical line, but I know last year, I think, we had a six percent reduction in the premiums from what they were to be for. We're just in the process, the renewal date is March fourth for the coming term, so we're just in the process of negotiating the terms, and we should have those available to us by the end of the week or early next week. And I've just talked to Melanie, I'll come down and present to her on the renewal pricing and the school of coverage.
And I guess the one other thing that I wanted to sort of interject into the equation here is that not only are we somewhat price-sensitive, but we're also very sensitive to the fact that our coverage gets placed with companies that have the financial ability to be able to handle the claims. The last thing we want to be doing is fighting with an insurance company over a claim that they're not prepared to deal with financially. So we need to know that our coverage is placed with companies that are reputable in the marketplace and can step up and pay the claim, the disaster's claim if and when it occurs.
No, and that's a good point. So we do have a committee in-house that reviews the financial stability of all the insurance companies that we deal with. And from the municipal point of view, you know, no one is, you're not getting placed with anyone who's got a less than eighty plus rating. So they're very strong financially and stable. There was an insurer in the municipal world called OMAX, and it was really a reciprocal. And OMAX basically was kind of an amalgamation of insurance risks brought together by a lot of different municipal councils. OMAX ran into some serious problems about five, six years ago, and it no longer exists. So it's important again that you have that stability and you're in place with insurers that have the long-term commitment to the municipal insurance marketplace. I mentioned there, Zurich, because Zurich is a company we do business with, but they've been in and out of the municipal marketplace in the last ten, fifteen years. They come in for two or three years and then have a bad run of luck, and then they're out again, you know? And that's not a company that we really see as being of any real benefit to us in terms of looking after our municipal clients, because at the end of the day, you are a client, and we have to make sure that you have the best long-term deal that is available to you. I'm going to let Blair talk about the specifics of the program, but in a nutshell, there are only two kinds of insurance you can buy. And it really tracks your financial statements, so you have insurance on your assets, your buildings, and then you have insurance on your liabilities, which is really your operations. So there's a summary here, and I'll ask Blair to run through it and just give you a more specific idea of the kind of insurance that we're providing for you.
Thank you, Lawrence. As I said, Blair Hancock, I work closely with Lawrence. Anything BFL will come through ultimately, and for myself, and reach out to Toronto, Montreal, and claims resources that will come from us. My background is in underwriting, I also worked at a global brokerage for about five years with a lot of public entities, bases as well, and crown corporations on top of the culture. But we'll get into the specifics of the coverage. Lawrence left me in the portion with no pictures on it, so that's your summary here with a bunch of text on there. How are we for time? I don't think I saw what our time allotted was.
No, go ahead, I think with educational opportunities.
Absolutely. Appreciate the time for that. And any questions along the way, this is, of course, for you and for your health and information. This is, of course, a summary of, looking throughout what I guess would probably be eight hundred, two thousand pages of insurance wording, so it'll remain high level, but of course, anything afterwards, anyone that jot it down, we can provide in full detail and writing. But for now, we'll be having a working. So the basis of coverage and your starting point is a public entity general liability. That's for bodily injury and property damage to third parties. There's other things that extend from this, but that's the basis for our legal liability and stuff ensuing because they were hurt or injured, be it their house, be it the slip and fall and township or sidewalk, et cetera. That's, you get a statement of claim saying, "We were hurt and it was your fault." And that comes back from just the application of liability. Everyone has a duty to not injure others and try to save in a safe environment.
And this is really your day-to-day operation insurance, so your roads department, your environmental department, your building department, this is the insurance that is normally called in a claim on a daily basis.
And that's fifty million coverage?
Yes.
That's right. So it's fifty million is the limit on that. There's a couple of extensions of coverage in there that are ancillary to it, but that is the main element of coverage for that. There is a ten thousand dollar deductible, that's the deductible, some are variable as you see it in there. And that's for all third-party claim to losses. That doesn't mean you have to pay that upfront, that's if there's ultimately a payment, the insurer still retains the duty to defend on this policy. So if the statement of claim is received, whether it's a grant or not, the insurer has the duty to review that and respond to that action. The second one we have on here, also with a fifty million dollar limit, is what's called public entity errors and emissions liability. This will include employment practices for staff, wrongful dismissal suits, discrimination, those types of claims, but it's also more of the township business operational aspect.
So this insurance actually is more particular to you guys seeing here tonight. So the public errors and insurance is basically professional insurance for the management of the municipality. So if someone were to allege that they felt that you guys were doing a good job, this is where we'd like to see a claim. So the first insurance, the public entity is what we call in the insurance business BIPD, it's bodily injury and property damage, and that's damages caused to a third party as a result of your operations. The public errors, the public entity is really your professional insurance, how you manage your operations on a daily basis, and if someone takes offense at that, this is likely where we're going to see a lawsuit. It protects the council and the mayor and the council as well.
And the major factors is the errors and emissions will respond to financial losses opposed to bodily injury and property damage. That could be from what's called a wrongful act, error or omission. That could be alleging conflict of interest, anything related to permits, giving or not giving permits, and fraud or solicitation of bond.
It's really, in a nutshell, it's basically failure to perform, you know what I mean? It's not doing the job the way you're supposed to be, at the standard you're expected to do that.
Yeah. So those ones are kind of grouped together, so if there's any questions at this time on kind of the general liability or errors and emissions, it would probably be an appropriate time if anyone had a question at this point, otherwise we can serve the law.
This is, this first phase is where we see the most activity on your insurance, where someone has brought someone, a third party outside the municipality's butt in action against you. We don't see a lot of claims, elaborate that, but we don't see a lot of claims on the first party that occurs.
Yep, and that's whether or not it's even a councilor, staff member personally, or the township, or all of the above.
So what is our overall claims experience then?
Overall claims experience, it's funny again, I'm kicking myself because I walked over that today, but in my experience, overall, this municipality is a very well-run municipality. We have one open claim, I just actually got an email today, it's a slip and fall claim where someone alleges that they fell and slipped on a sidewalk and injured themselves. And I'm actually going to be writing an email, or a letter, I've been asked to write a letter to Deborah and to Melanie, basically outlining where this claim is at. The claim is currently reserved for twenty thousand dollars, and the feeling is that it's entirely defensible, that the township, in terms of maintaining your sidewalk and your roads, did everything you're supposed to do.
So we, minimum standard, we're all familiar with minimum standards on our sidewalks and our roads, so that's why you're calling it a defensible claim.
Yes, yeah, there's certainly no allegation of negligence on the part of the municipal municipality.
And how long has that claim been an open claim?
That claim's been open now since last year, I think. Yeah, these, so we see, I mean, in our world, we see a lot of these claims, they tend to, what happens if someone gets injured, and then they go to a lawyer, and then the lawyer will send them a letter, and then so, you know, the time that all happens and the insurance company gets put on notice, it usually takes about a part of a year before anything really starts to get some traction. And some of these claims can drag on for three, four, five years, but generally speaking, not much happens in the first twelve months. So this claim happened, I think, last winter, I don't have the exact date on it, but certainly last year. It's the only real claim we've had in the last year. We did have a, there was a claim before that where there was an allegation of negligence on behalf of the municipality over a sewer backup issue, but it turned out that that the sewer wasn't actually even on municipal property, it was on private property, so. The claims we've seen beyond that, of course, you get the, your truck claims, right, your vehicle claims, we see those, those are, those are standard. We had one last year, I think, with a, one of the dump trucks that rolled off the road, which I think was about thirty or forty thousand dollars, we paid it. And now that, you know, you get the old vendor vendors where a municipal vehicle went and presented to someone or vice versa, so. But the overall claims experience on Edersburg is excellent from an underwriting perspective.
Okay, anybody else want to jump in at this point before Blair goes on? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and that was a big example of just minimum standards. It's, you get a statement of claim, it's proving that those were adhered to or there's deviation to that, and that's part of the process of, there's things that were done properly, and it's just a matter of proving that and defending that action. There's another difference between the general liability and the errors and emissions. So when you see the public entity general liability, it's on a each occurrence basis, errors and emissions is each claim. So general liability for this term, for example, is 2018 to 2019, March to March. If somebody were to slip and fall today and present a claim two years from now, that would be a long time period, I believe, for that, that claim would go under today's policy. On the other hand, the errors and emissions policy, if someone were to allege conflict of interest or any action under there that's not a bodily injury or property damage, that would go at the time that the claim was actually made and received by the town, even if that's five, ten years out. Just like the general liability is locked in time for five, ten, fifteen years, it will always fall back to its exact policy. Typically, with no one aware, if there's a third party that's injured, if it's, especially with a vehicle accident, but if it's a slip and fall, and year to year, you don't really know until it's received, and then there can be a time delay with that. The other part and extension on this commercial general liability, which certainly comes up a lot in questions, is what's called non-owned auto liability. You have your own vehicles and fleet which have auto insurance. The non-owned auto is any rented, hired, or individuals driving their vehicles on behalf of the town, even if it's just running an errand, or even if it's a member of the town as a volunteer. Their insurance will be the primary responder of that if they're carrying one or two million in liability, and they get in an accident and it's found to be in the course of running an errand for the town or otherwise, that can vicariously fall back to the city, and that's what, that's what this non-owned auto liability is, and follows the same limit as the general liability. The next piece we'll move on to is environmental impairment liability. If there's any fuel tanks, diesel, et cetera, or sites that have the potential of contaminating groundwater table or lakes, rivers, even if it's not discovered in a timely fashion, that's where these claims for the ministry or environment can come and say, "This needs to be cleaned up." A lot of the times, what drives the cost in the claims for that is that it takes a long time for a spill even from a tank to be discovered, and one small tank can easily generate an eight hundred thousand dollar remediation claim or more. Certainly more when there's remote areas, and certainly more if it's something that can enter the water table and travel a great distance. To the crime insurance, so one, of course, is the staff and employee dishonesty. That's more of your typical client crime examples, easy losses of where, whether it's setting up a fictitious employee, a fictitious vendor, or just taking, outright taking money from probably the employee does, that would be this employee dishonesty.
Those are the kind of claims that we see that go on for years and years and years. So you have an employee who decides to borrow some money from your, you know, replenish it, but never gets around to it, and then it happens again and again and again. So the type of claims we see of employee dishonesty, generally speaking, have been going on for years, they don't happen over there for sure.
Yeah, and I mean, see a million, you think there's no way, you know, a player could lock up that in cash, or you'd notice that if it was, they changed a vendor or redirected it. But typically, the discovery period, I think, is as much as seven years, that can even be expense fraud or otherwise. So the million is, the basis is not any one-time loss, but how long a loss can go before it's discovered. Some of these other forms are just funds transfer fraud, if someone were to hack in and redirect a payment from a computer standpoint. Loss inside and outside the premises, that's taking money from a safe, so they're a little more of yesterday's kind of exposure. The one item I'll certainly highlight on here is fraudulent induced payment. That has a sublim, a sublimit of a hundred thousand dollars, and it also has the word phishing under there. So those are, a lot of these claims you're seeing in the news or otherwise, or you're getting emails asking you to confirm your bank information or to send a wire transfer. Basically, it's inducing payments from someone by trickery. So it's an email, if, me for example, if I got one from Lawrence saying that we need to issue a check for twenty thousand dollars to this client for a refund, and as it turns out, it wasn't actually from Lawrence, and his email was spelled differently, but I didn't notice, and I just quickly sent it. Policies and procedures usually prevent that, I don't have any ability to send a check anyways, but directly would go through the channels, but a lot of times, it could be a hacked or fraudulent email, or it could be someone calling on the phone saying they're, if it was BFL within the company and that, you know, if they need help because someone else is out. They're very sophisticated, they collect a lot of information, and sometimes they'll get access to an email or an account, and then it can kind of spiral out of control from there. They'll know when people are on, by say, day, and it's those who are often not targeting any particular organization or town, of course. They're sending out broad emails to see if someone clicks, or someone provides a password, or someone re-enters it somewhere, and that's the starting point of it. So that's kind of the evolution of the crime policy, that's probably the newest change to that. When we're talking about the property, there's a laundry list of extensions that are ancillary to covering actual property and assets. Typically, it wouldn't spend a lot of time on here, that limit at the top is just a summation of everything we have on a schedule that's covered.
So the, yeah, so the municipal officials will provide us with a list of all the owned properties, and that number of forty-five, forty-six million dollars is really, that's provided to us, and coverage is provided on a replacement cost basis, so it's basically you for all the rent advantage.
Yeah, that's just on a list, and it's updated year to year, so if the assets go up, that will increase from forty-five or forty-eight million and change as is shown here, increase or decrease accordingly as according to the schedule that we receive from the center of the insurer.
Excuse me, you said the town replacement cost? It's not ACV?
No. It's not depreciation. Over the years, the insurance company has moved away from doing ACV, actual cash value settlements, because it's just, it's too much conflict in trying to, you know, decide what is the, is it forty percent depreciation, is it seventy percent? So now they've brought the this whole replacement cost, so it's, you get, you know, literally, something, this table was bought ten years ago and cost five hundred bucks, today it costs a thousand bucks or maybe a thousand bucks, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Council's replacement cost, there is a lot of variation out there. Sometimes there's provisions that if it was a building, for instance, it would need to be replaced or rebuilt in a timely fashion, anywhere from a year to two to three years, and if not, it would revert to actual cash value, but this is indeed a replacement cost.
There's the added...
There's the audit expense, it's on the previous page, the two hundred thousand dollar coverage on audit expense. How does that come into play?
Audit expense could be a help with quantifying or proving a loss, so it'd be, it'd be an account fee or otherwise.
No longer sweetened.
Yeah, or, or lawyer, and putting together a statement of loss. Because there is an element of money being provided for using an alternate facility or to provide an interruption. If that facility generated revenue, it'll, it'll pick up coverage for replacing that revenue.
Yeah, so I mean, if you have, if you have a loss, first thing the insurance company is going to say to you is prove, prove your loss. Say your bill is worth a million bucks, show me it's worth a million bucks. You have to bring in an engineer or an architect or, or an accountant, you know, the taxes and all that stuff.
Well, under that, would that cover us if, whenever a ring, something happened that it shut down and we lost it for the season? Would that cover our losses for that ring being operational for the season?
Does it cover, was there business interruption much for the loss of revenue?
Yeah, there's a good, a supplement there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so there would be a lot of, of, of coverage for sure.
And that's where the audit expense is more, more prevalent and seeing how much it was comparing it to past periods. So that's what helped in putting that together and all the scan through to see if you have.
So what does the coverage cover? Does it cover loss of revenue? Does it cover?
So loss of coverage, direct physical loss or damage, so it covers the direct physical loss or damage to the, the item, the building or a ring. Then it also covers the loss of revenue, the loss of, it's, it's a loss of profit, net profit. This is basically your net profit plus expenses, so salaries and all that would be covered as part of the claim.
Yeah, it'd be a plus minus calculation. If there's a cost that doesn't continue, that would be, that would be one that's, you know, forgotten, but it's, it's to cover all the expenses that either.
It's like a business interruption.
And replacement, yeah, business interruption.
Right?
Yes, yeah, so it is, it is, it is on there.
What is the, what is the definition you've got here, fine arts? What is, what is the definition of that?
Fine art, so it's the fifty thousand with a five thousand limit per unscheduled item. If there was any item, that's on a blanket basis. If you had specific items, like a piece of art that was displayed that was worth a hundred thousand, we could have that added and scheduled. That's just miscellaneous, any fine arts, it doesn't have to be a painting, it could be an artifact.
Well, it could be picture of, of the crane, I mean, it's really such a, to tell you what fine art is, yes, some interpretation.
And anything on here, any pointers, anything specific that we need to look at more? For instance, if there was, you know, if we had a schedule of five hundred thousand dollars worth of fine arts, we'd provide that to ensure to have it, to have it put on the schedule and included of the coverage.
But if it's not a scheduled item, it's a five thousand dollar limit per unscheduled item. So in other words, we haven't provided you with the schedule.
Correct, correct.
If we were to provide you with the schedule of all of these, then they would be.
So your group of seven, you know, paintings should be sent to one policy, right?
Okay, yeah, but we have to provide you a schedule.
Yeah, and it would be reviewed, and depending on the limit, they might, they might be seeking appraisals for what their value is to have an agreed kind of replacement cost or a settlement value for it. So another subset which can really just be blended in with property is equipment breakdown coverage. That's a lot like property, but it's eating hatchback, pressure vessels, electric panels.
So I think your, your equipment at, at the arena, anything that, that you, the operating equipment is considered to be, that would be covered under this section of policy for breakdown?
Yeah, sometimes for, for small packages around the same policy, it can be underwritten separately. The history of that is that equipment and boilers have always been considered to be specialty, and they have in the past been underwritten by, underwritten by a separate underwriter. So it's more of a historical evolution of insurance that it's not property and equipment breakdown, but it follows the same limit there, they're around about the fifty million as a property policy. And any loss that would be the result of a boiler or a panel arcing and failing and causing a fire, it would simply go under the equipment breakdown policy as opposed to the property policy, depending where the fires actually started. So between the two, if there was no, if you couldn't determine if it's, if a fire started in a panel or an arcing in a panel, electrical panel, even if these are with different insurers, they have what's called a joint loss agreement to say that we're going to share until we can figure out which item actually caused the loss. And the same thing, you'll see it's repeated, business interruption is there, so. As it's a separate form that just mirrors the, the property that if a boiler failed, sudden accidental failure that caused a business eruption at the ring, for instance, that, that would trigger that policy there. And next, on the next page, we've got the audit policy, which we've kind of briefly spoken about before. Bodily injury, property damage arising out of the use, operation, and ownership of vehicles. So those are your accidents and all of the collisions.
The one thing that that policy has is replacement cost coverage on vehicles, which is not available on your regular car insurance policy. So if you buy, if you have insurance on your own vehicle, it's, it's a, a ACV. This policy provides replacement cost coverage on vehicles. And it's really intended for, it was actually brought in because of fire trucks. So a fire truck was bought in nineteen ninety-nine for a hundred grand, today it's probably worth two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, so that's, that will give you the, you know, the, the cost or the, the settlement for a brand new vehicle at today's price.
Yeah, so that would be the, the audit policy. And deductible overall is five thousand dollars on that. There's not a lot to speak to on the coverage because it's a standard form in Ontario.
Yeah.
And the last piece is what's called the listed as municipal officials accident. That's a form of accidental death and dismemberment, whether or not you have other coverage available to yourselves through a balance or wire. This is voluntary coverage for injury, and it lists all staff and council members as, as covered for this. So this is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then it has a chart which basically dictates the payment based on type of injury, be it broken leg or loss of a digit through limb or otherwise.
So we update that schedule at the end of the election?
No, it's not about it.
It's not about it?
You don't have to change it, yeah.
Typically, we, we're just providing the actual numbers, but it's not a scheduled individual. It'll actually broadly say, it does say as on file, but it will broadly say those who are, are staff or council, past, present, future, rather than using my name. So it's more so just a number base for the cost.
So we don't get the weekly accident indemnity if we're over seventy?
Correct.
That's right, yeah.
And the other coverage, all other coverage ceases to apply the date the insurance purchase reaches eighty.
Yeah, now, unless you, I mean, the one thing that's not, is if you need the coverage beyond dating, we can apply to the insurance company and probably get it added. Because for underwriting rules and actual rules, they, they cut off the coverage of any G.
But basically, oh, this is for the benefit of our families. If we're, if we're killed in an accident on.
Yeah, it's what they call, they, they, it's accident of death and dismemberment. So, so it covers any amount of death, and there's a reduced schedule of benefits for dismemberment of the loss of a leg or loss of a limb or loss of a leg.
And it says, it applies on a twenty-four hour basis, whether or not on company business?
Yeah, so you're covering thirty, yeah, twenty-four hour.
And just a question regarding, coverage applies to five council members? Now, does that apply only to Edgburnsburg, Cardenham because of five council members? Or if there was a, if we had seven council members, would that still say five?
Uh, no, it should be the full, the full schedule of, of, yes.
Okay, so just, just wanted to up for the three last questions for, I don't know, Mr. Hancock? Appreciate you taking the questions as you went through the presentation, it makes it a little bit easier. Any other last minute question before I thank you, gentlemen? Okay, so I'll then thank you, and needless to say, we'll be looking for premiums for the new year.
We'll be looking for a payment?
That's not a problem, chair, immediately after that.
Seriously, that's been a pleasure working with, with, for the municipal staff, being fantastic to work with, and certainly appreciate the support of the council over the years as well.
Now, take, from what, from the question that I asked, I'm assuming then that we only have one open claim at this point?
Yes.
Okay, but we did have a claim payout in the last calendar year as a result of a truck accident of some sort.
I think that was the year before, actually. Maybe, I think it was settled in this, in this term. There was a truck, remember there was a truck went off the road, the dump truck? It slid off the side of the road.
No, I, I believe that was a fire truck on, on four sixteen that was rear-ended.
Which it was a fire truck. So we had that claim, the fire truck slid off the road and sustained some damage, and it had to be repaired, so it was maybe forty thousand dollars in damage.
Okay, and we can generate that report from our system.
Yeah, I'll, we'll bring it down, I, I'm, my apologies, I should have had it here, but I'll, I'll bring it down to the, but the fact that, you know, we, we live this separate, the fact that I can't think of it tells me that you guys are, the most are, kind free or are certainly doing a lot of open claims or on direct rates.
Well, we appreciate you coming here tonight and giving us this kind of little update on the, on the coverage and the services they could provide. I know that over the past years, we have had good service. As I say, we do watch the premiums, but we also watch the companies that we're with, we want to know that they're secure.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate you.
And more than willing to stay for the rest of the meeting, it's better than dinner and movie.
Well, rushing back to the, the, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks, I'll get, I'll get you a shot for all.
Okay, so I'm moving on to item six on the agenda, which is discussion items. I see there's nothing listed under that. So we'll get right down to item seven, which is the accident information item. And the first item there is the fourth order building report. And I guess I'm going to ask Mr. Hopkins if he cared to address himself to that report.
Thank you, your worship. For those of you that are new to our council, these are the reports that we have generated over the past three years to try to bring some clarity and also some look back over the past twelve months prior to, to do some comparisons. And of course, you've had a chance to look at that, and it's pretty obvious that twenty eighteen was slower than twenty seventeen. It's hard to guess what those reasons are, but it is what it is. It is a known fact that across Ontario, this is a common thing that's happening right now in smaller rural municipalities. We are not alone there. In the urban centers, there's a lot of growth happening, but in the rural areas, there's not nearly as much, so. But in comparison to other municipalities our size, we are still very healthy and strong, and there is growth. So we're encouraged by that as well, so. If you have any questions concerning any of that report, then I would gladly entertain those.
Could I?
Councilor, Chair.
Could I just get some clarifications, Mr. Hopkins? On the, on the permit fees, I see they, they seem to jump all over the place. You've got, we'll, we'll just say under the demolition column, where we have a five thousand dollar demolition, and the permit fee is ninety-five dollars. And then we have a two hundred and, twenty-five hundred dollar demolition value, and it's a hundred and ninety dollars. Why, why is that?
Sure, that's per month.
Okay.
So if you look, per month, so like in January, that is correct. So that would be one permit was taken out, a demolition permit for a five thousand dollar valued demolition. In the two rows down from that, that's in the month of March, so that's a total demolitions in March. So that would be two demolition permits, two ninety-five, all demolition permits are ninety-five dollars.
Oh, okay, fine, okay, got, now I got you.
So the value of that demolition could be higher or lower for the construction value of taking the house down, but the permit is a simple ninety-five dollar permit fee.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you.
So it's just a flat ninety-five?
Correct.
So we don't go by the value of what we're tearing down?
Not for demolition, no.
Okay.
Other questions on this report? And Councilor Dilva?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see we're, it's almost doubled that we're down, eh? Eleven million from two seventeen to six million two eighteen.
In construction value, correct.
Yes. That's, that's, geez, that's almost fifty percent down, eh?
Correct.
Would that have anything to do that when we were having all these signs out ED nineteen and so on and so forth, I wonder?
Good question. I have no validation for that.
Thank you, sir.
It also has to do with the agricultural values. If you look at that column, there was a couple of large farms that expanded, industrial expanded. So those values are construction values, not permit values. So if you go over to the next row, ninety thousand compared to a hundred and two, we're actually only down twelve thousand dollars in permit fees compared to the year before, so.
In, in the agriculture, you mean?
No, with the total one, over beside, just.
Okay, yes, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
So construction value is down, but permit fees is not on the same ratio at all.
Right, right, but the value is quite down quite a lot.
Correct.
On the question, okay.
And that happened because back in twenty seventeen, the agricultural permit fee was different. It was to a maximum amount, which was fifteen hundred dollars is the most that we could charge farmers.
Right.
That value has been taken off as far as that's the limit. Now they pay forty cents a square foot up to whatever it is. So if it's a million dollars, there's forty cents on the million dollars. Where before, the most you could charge was fifteen hundred dollars and.
Thank you.
Councilor, Councilor Hunter?
We're on agriculture, I have lots of questions over our agricultural permits because of, in my opinion, agriculture permits from a change to, put a great burden on farmers for, for that agricultural change there. I'm just looking at the permit here, you got, the first agricultural permit was a value of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the permit was thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. And you go over to residential, the third one down there, you have a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar value house, and the permit was four hundred and fifty dollars for it.
But, you know, with all due.
There's a lot less inspections to do on a, on a barn going up than there is on a house going up, so.
But we set those rates. Count, the, the tables, the table sets the rates.
I know the table set the rate. I just think it was an extremely heavy burden to change that rate that much to fifteen hundred dollars to, on maximum was before to go to some of them, well, ones thirty-five hundred dollars there. And I know there's other ones going up, but you do it. I think going on a square foot appraisal on a barn and compared to a square foot appraisal on a house is a totally different thing. You can get a million dollar house go, going up, that's two thousand, twenty-five hundred square foot that you're basing a value on, but you get a million dollar barn going up, but you're charging a rate on it might be twenty times that square footage. On, you're looking at a big area, but as far as the inspection rate is, doing it, the inspection's far left because there's, you're just looking, everything's wide open there, and you walk in and it's a lot different than having to walk through a room by room in a house and inspect it. I'm sure you as a building inspector, there's a lot less time to inspect a million dollar barn than it is to inspect a million dollar house, and a lot less trips there to inspect it, so.
And if I may, worship to the chair, what happens sometimes, Councilor Hunter, on that is we also have the option to charge nine dollars per thousand for that, and so if that's a better rate, we have the option to provide that. That also provides for industrial and commercial as well in the same gamut. That if it's a better value and not as cumbersome for the inspector to make as many visits, then we go to the lesser value on that. So it's not always per square foot, sometimes it's on per thousand.
Okay, so, so my question is, you, you give the, the person that's doing the building, you give them the option of which?
No.
Oh, how do you decide?
On how many inspections it's going to take.
Oh, on how many inspections it's going to take.
Correct.
How do you know, though? Like on a farm, do you, do you have that down, Mr. Hopkins?
Pretty well, yeah, it's just experience with that.
Right, so it'll take eight inspection? Would you go the forty cents, or would you go the nine dollars per thousand?
I'd have to do the calculations, but I always, we always treat the residents in a good way. It's never take advantage of them, so.
Thank you.
And see the director wants in here, go ahead.
Through, through the chair. So we can, can certainly make note of Councilor Hunter's concerns with the, with the current fee structure. And when the fee structure comes up again for renewal, it can be certainly discussed at, at Canadian council, which means there, there needs to be some type of change.
And that's fair comment, but I just, and I can't remember when we changed, when we last adjusted these fees, but I will point out that the building department operates on a break even basis. So we tried to raise the fees in order to cover the costs. But as you can see, in twenty eighteen, we only recovered eighty-five thousand two hundred and nine dollars in permit fees, which was not sufficient to cover the cost of operating the department for that year, with the end result that we had to transfer, I think it was twenty-some thousand, from a reserve account that we have for that purpose to make up the deficiency in the building activity, if I can put it that way. So it becomes a balancing act as to how much to be charged for the fees. So it becomes a balancing act as to how much do we charge for the fees and recover from the permits versus how much we recover from, or how much we transfer from the reserve account. But the money only got into the reserve account in years when the fees or the permit fees were in excess of the operating costs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we, do we add to, to the treasurer, do we ever actually transfer from taxation monies into that reserve?
Not in the time that I've been treasurer here, no.
Okay, so we've sort of worked on some years, we have to draw from the reserve to cover shortages.
Yep.
Other years, we have surpluses that we transfer into the reserve.
Correct.
Counselor Cameron.
I just also like to point out, too, that just let, let's not remember when a, when a farmer builds his million dollar barn, the farmer is recouping money from that, from that operation as well for residential property. The million dollar residential property doesn't really give back any money as a, as a business to, to, to the homeowner. So we have to take that into consideration as well when, when the rates are being, being discussed.
Okay, and I guess the one thing that I want to mention here is that new home construction in the township. Actually, it was thirteen in twenty, thirteen new homes in 2018 compared to sixteen in 2017. But it seemed to me that we peaked somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five. Am I correct about that?
I believe that was in 2016.
Twenty sixteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I wonder, I'm just curious, I wonder how close the project values that are stated here come in with the impact assessment of.
All that's, do we ever do that comparison to the treasurer?
Sorry. No, it, it never really correlates. The, the project value never really correlates with the impact assessment on the property.
Okay, so there's your answer. What is higher, what's, what's?
Very rarely does it ever match.
But what's higher, impact or, or the value?
I wouldn't say, I couldn't say for sure on each individual one without doing a comparison, but.
I think most of the time, if you looked at the impact, most of the houses around the, around the township, what their impact value was and what you would actually take for the house. I don't think anybody would take what the impact value is in their house. We complain about our tax rate, but if you look at your impact value, what your house, they value your house at, that you're taxed on, you'd probably never sell your house for that money.
The assessed value.
Assessable, correct.
I know that that is their, it's interesting because they're obligated by law that their assessed value is supposed to be market value as determined in the marketplace. And they're supposed to use comparables to get to that assessed value. But the point is that they don't. And the other point is that they do try to keep their assessed values somewhat below marketplace for a very reason that you just mentioned. Deputy Mayor, do you have your hand up? No? Okay, so if there's no other questions with this report, I'm going to move on.
More questions. Under their column others, it says there, agent permits for other things there. We got quite a bit of value, $275,000 under other, and it says fairs and churches and one thing and other. What, what actually was that? Was it $245,000 for?
Part of that was the school in Johnstown. They did some renovations to that. That was a larger part of that one. I'd have to go back, Counselor, to see what the thirty thousand was, but I do know that the 245 wasn't making part of that.
I'm just wondering if that's part of what.
Yeah.
Okay, so just before I move on, I just want to make note, I don't want to pass, that Mr. Hopkins has provided us, as you see, as part of the package, a letter of appreciation indicating that he's enjoyed his time with us. And if I could just reciprocate on behalf of council to indicate that we're very disappointed to learn of your resignation. But we do want to, we do understand these things and we do want to wish you the very best in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm moving on then to seven B, which is the fourth quarter bylaw report. And are you going to speak to this one as well, Mr. Hopkins?
I would like to do so. Through the chair again. I do want to express my appreciation to Mr. Buffett. He has been a real delight to work with and I think represents our township very, very well and has done an amazing job again through this winter, especially in the snow plowing season. And I think the Director of Operations and the Road Superintendent have much appreciated his help in trying to work to keep our roads so that they can plow. It has been quite a challenge, but I think we are seeing some, some good results from that, from our perspective. From others, they may not like what's happening, but certainly it has been a help for the roads crew.
I'm surprised at how little pushback we've had. I haven't had a single complaint. And I see in here that he's issued something like, is it fourteen, but it's notices, not actual citations.
Yes, he, there has been a number of tickets that have been issued, so. I'm not sure because that has gone into this year as well, so I don't have the total numbers for that. But there have been fifteen there, but I think it's over thirty now that have been issued out, so.
That's actual tickets?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, was that thirty for 2019 or?
No, total this winter.
Total, thank you.
So you can see the activity log, which were provided by month. And then there's the summary log at the, which is the sort of the second page of the report. I'm, I tend, I tend to look at the, at the summary log. But I do have a question about the summary log. So the summary log indicates to me that we have about 251, I'm going to call it files that we're working on in 2018. But when I look at the January through December activity logs, and, and I try to determine how many we're dealing with, it, it doesn't seem to compute. I, I guess maybe I'm not, the activity log is more in the, in the way of activity more than the number of files. So a file may have three activities.
Correct. And I think that that is the confusing part. And we try to figure out how to kind of do it in a more concise way. And that's the best that we could do to show how many files have been opened. A lot of them take active work, were ongoing. There's some resolutions made, but for example, in clean yards, John would go and visit a yard and if compliance is being made, he would keep visiting that to get the, the order that has been issued resolved. So that could be three or four or five visits, but as long as there's movement, he continues to work with them. So that activity would show through each month that he attends that property. And then the file would not be closed until compliance has been reached.
Now, I see the comment POA issued, that's a Provincial Offenses Act, that's a ticket issued.
Correct.
What's NOV issued? Notice of violation?
Correct.
Ah, okay. Now, are there any questions from the table with regards to this report? Counselor Dillabon.
I just have one. It's the parking. Of the whole year, we had six parking complaints. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And yet we are want to have no parking up at the, up at the auction center. I don't get that. We only have six in all, the whole township, complaints. And we're passed a bylaw to get no parking on that one north side for the.
Well, yeah, but we've had complaints there, we just haven't done anything.
We have complaints, I don't see, I, I see six.
No, those six are in places where we do have jurisdiction.
So we have no jurisdiction up at County Road, County Road 21, is that what you're saying?
The, the jurisdiction is, is, is of a mixed bag, I think is the best way to put it. We haven't exerted our jurisdiction onto County Road 21 yet at this point. And I think that was the whole discussion around this table a couple of meetings ago, where we decided that we would notify the counties that we were going to exercise jurisdiction in that area. If I can phrase it that way, I don't know whether I'm capturing it correctly or not.
I also believe that the six that are shown here, that would be where the officer, bylaw officer, was notified.
Correct.
But if a phone call came in to, say, Deborah or Rebecca, that may not be passed on. That would be just made a note of. Am I correct in assuming that?
Very.
So how do we rectify that? Or get our offer, well, do we have to?
Stop.
So, so, so through, so through the chair. In those particular areas where a potential parking complaint has come on a county road, we, we have no enforcement jurisdiction, so it's unlikely that it would be officially logged. Because there, there's really no action that we can take at, at this particular time. And that's basically the, the resolution passed a few meetings ago.
Yes.
Last month. We're seeking approval from the county to be able to erect signs and have that enforcement capability.
But going to Counselor Dillabon's question, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth or anything, but I think he got the number six from the bylaw enforcement annual report for the whole year.
Correct.
And under the parking column there, there's a total of six. So that says to me that he actually opened six files about parking and took an action. He may have issued a provincial offenses notice, he may have just issued a warning, but he took an action on six.
Correct, so if I could look, if you can look at January 2018 bylaw activity log.
Yes.
The bottom three are parking, parking complaints in Ventnor.
Three of them.
So there were three of them.
Yeah.
Right, so there was a phone call and a site vision, a site visit and they, they started hearing the, the restrictions.
Cardinal in April, same thing, closed vehicle removed.
Correct.
Yeah, I highlighted every one, that's how, that's why I just, I didn't realize. The doc, you kind of. Okay, any further questions with this report? Hearing none, then both can move on. So now I'm at item seven C, which is the fourth quarter treasury report for the reserve and the reserve funds report. And I guess the treasurer's going to speak to this report.
Sure, through the chair, this quarterly report is brought to committee every quarter for the, for the year. It gives you a prior year for the same quarter. It gives you the prior period, which would have been the third quarter balances and then the current, current year totals. So the first is a financial report with just really kind of a balance sheet type of report. It's a simplified version, it's certainly not what you're going to see when you see the statements coming from the auditors. But this is just to give you a bit of a snapshot of where we are in cash balance, in tax receivables, accounts receivables and, and so on.
Okay, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, just a clarification on the capital project status report.
Wait a minute now, I'm just going to stick with this one for a minute. The, the front page to start with.
Oh, okay.
Your account, Mr. Robertson.
Through the mayor, just a, accounts receivable, $601,000. Does that include that outstanding provincial grant? Maybe they, they haven't settled on the.
No, no, no. I see you're talking about municipal partnership fund.
Yeah.
We don't know the amount. That's a twenty-eight, a 2019 issue. We did receive the full amount in 2018.
Yeah, no, accounts receivable would be made up through the chair through, with respect to ice rentals for the arenas, advertising, water rears, you know, that kind of, those overarching receivables that we have, that we build to, to people.
Are they all good?
Most of them are relatively current, yes.
They all thirty, sixty, ninety days?
Yeah, we stay, I stay on top of those receivables to make sure that they're within the, the requirement.
You said ice rentals?
Yep.
Like, is that like minor hockey, different minor hockey organizations?
Various different hockey or, or skating clubs, yep.
So that would just mean that, for example, maybe the figure skating club hadn't paid for their December ice time as of December the 31st. So it was a receivable at December the 31st. Check might have come in on the 5th of January.
Correct.
Counselor Hunter.
Under the same part there, Count Prichet, but this is where we have listed under the outstanding cleanup costs down at 7:30. Is that listed under there, too?
Um, it would be now. In 2017, it wasn't there. And then eight, September 2018, yeah, it would have, it, it is in there now. It just, it, it moved from taxation to accounts receivable, that portion. We had to clear it when the new owners took possession of the property.
So it's in there now on the.
It did get moved into, yeah.
On the December.
Thirty-first.
On December 18, year end.
Correct.
What is that, where the chair, that's about 270?
Just, yeah, I think it's around two sixty, two seventy, yeah.
Is there any update on where we stand to collect now?
They, I, I think the CAO had a report before she left, but I, I'm, I'm still waiting a, a message back from BLG to see where they're standing.
Okay, and no update through, through the, through the acting CAO?
There's no update today.
The one thing that I wanted to comment on this page, Counselor Cameron, before we went on, is the taxes receivable. And I'll draw your attention to the fact that the taxes receivable at the end of December 18 are way down from where they were at December 31, 2017. And I believe that over the intervening period, actually for quite a number of years now, the treasurer has been working very diligently to get notices out in plenty of time for people to get their taxes paid before year end. But the 720,000, we do address that later in the report when we get to the number that have gone into tax arrears, right?
Correct.
Now, are there any other questions with this first page before I go on to the second page?
Comment on that same subject with that drop in tax receivable. A lot of that drop was when we got paid out by the trustee for tax arrearing on 7:30, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I believe that was just about 140,000, no.
Okay, so.
I have another question through you, Mr. Mayor. The accounts payable, 11,000 or 1,188,103, that's really a receivable, not a payable.
Yeah, it's what we pay out.
What we're due to pay out.
What we're due to pay out. It's a liability that we pay out. It's not a receivable.
What, what would make it so large?
Just at year end, there's a lot of things that would have been, would, would have been.
There would be some Walker Street stuff in there.
Yeah, there was a lot of final payouts.
Yeah, probably, probably a couple of draws, or at least one draw from Walker Street.
Yeah, it's similar to last year's.
I think a credit for those assault the same, too.
Well, actually, it's not similar to last year because last year our, our payables were the other side.
Well, it should have brackets on, I apologize, it should have a credit bracket.
Oh, that's what he was referring to.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay, all right.
It looks like a receivable, not a payable.
It's not, it's a payable, it should have, have credits on that.
Oh, it should have the bracket.
Yeah.
Any other questions with this sheet before I move on to the second sheet? Which the second sheet is the long-term debt analysis and report. And you can see later on in the meeting, we're going to deal with the, we're going to deal with the, where is it here, the lift station. Item number five on the list, we have a loan with the Royal Bank of Canada for the lift station. The payments are named by Greenfield Ethanol. They were to expire in November 19, November 19, but I see they're, it's expiring earlier, May?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins.
The loan itself matures on May 2019. I don't know why it says November there, but.
It is actually May, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so any other questions with this, with this sheet? And the one thing that I would draw to the attention of council because we are in budget discussions and we were talking about, of, of buying a vehicle. My preference is that if we're going to buy it by means of borrowing, that we do it so that it appears on this sheet. That way we see it every three months, it becomes, it becomes repetitious, we remember what it's about. So any other questions here?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so what are, I guess we are in budget mode, and we haven't decided what we're going to do with the Volvo, have we?
That's the excavator.
Yeah, we haven't come to a conclusion on that, have we?
That is correct.
If we're going to buy it.
Through the chair, that will be something coming forward at the next budget meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, but it seems to me that what we're seeing in front of us is the balance showing on December the 31st was 130,000. And it seems to me that the number we've been discussing at budget is something like 99 or something? Because we will have paid it down a little bit more, is that...
Correct.
We would have had one more payment probably.
We'd go to August.
Well, their annual payment, oh, well, that doesn't necessarily mean. Those are the annual payments, but we may be paying the monthly or quarterly. Okay, if there are no more questions with this sheet, I'm going to move on to the capital project status report. Counselor Cameron, you have a question here?
Just a clarification from Mr. Director. Under Cardinal wastewater, it's a reline easement Henry to William. I'm just wondering where that reline was, was it on Dundas Street or some other place?
Through the chair, that was actually at the lower end of Henry Street, just before the Henry Street pumping station. And heading westerly, there's an easement running along the canal bank. So that section was...
The center.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you so much, yes.
Any other questions with this sheet? Hearing none, about to move on. And the next sheet, I think, is the reserves and the reserve funds. As of, now this is a glimpse as how they should look on December the 31st, 2018, subject now to the auditor. All the, the treasurer has made all the pertinent entries. It's just subject to adjustments. So the one thing that I would like to point out on this one, if you go down to the reserve funds and look at the reserve funds and look at what happened in 2018, on the right-hand side, there's a column marked year-to-date interest in 2018. And I just draw to your attention the fact that our reserve funds have been invested to earn $91,000 in 2018. Now, a lot of that investments are with L A S, some are with the bond portfolio, and some are with the equity portfolio, are they not?
No, actually, the township only has investments through L A S through the HISA account, the high interest savings.
And high interest savings account.
The bond and portfolio is, the port has their extra funds invested through the bonds and portfolio.
But I guess the point that I wanted to make is that it pays to have these reserve funds working for us. So are there any other questions with the reserves and reserve accounts? Reserve and reserve funds, actually. Hearing none, about to move on here. Okay, moving on then to item seven D, which is the fourth quarter budget variance report. And we have a budget variance report in front of us. And I'll just let the treasurer speak to it briefly.
Sure, again, this particular variance report is something that I bring forward quarterly. It's set up in a way that it shows all the revenues first, and then it shows your expenditures on the next couple of pages. Because variances aren't just the net. I wanted to show, I mean, we're showing budget right now in the summary version as a net, but this quarterly comes to committee with both the revenues and the expenditures because there are variances in both of those types, which either in effect both the surplus and the deficit depending. So we might end up with more revenues, which helps our end of year. We might have some more expenditures, which hurts, so there's both sides to the equation. I have done some verbal explanations of some of the revenues, which are over a certain percentage, just to highlight them. I don't know if you want to go through that, but, you know, the Grant and Lou, for instance, set up the majority of that overage, extra money was through penalties and interest. The fire department has actual additional revenues over budget, mainly due to M T O claims that we're actually receiving now, that we were having difficulty actually getting payouts from M T O, so that's encouraging.
Do we know what our payout ratio is?
I don't know that, I know the fire department is actually doing some analysis of that.
Through the chairs, there will be an M T O report before the February 19 meeting.
There will?
There will.
Thank you very much. Moving for 18?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll be able to see what our percentage question is?
That is correct, I believe it may be for the last six months. I believe there was a report mid-year.
Well, if we could get the full year. It would be helpful to get the full year.
We'll see what we can do to get that in front of you.
Any other questions? I guess I'm going to squeeze one in here because it is a variance report. And when I look at the next page, the page with the numbers on it, the biggest single variance that I see on the whole page is that, is taxation revenue. You know, where we were budgeted to receive 5,142,000, we actually received 5,391,000, which was there a variance in revenue there of 248,000, actually pretty close to 249,000. Variance in, but a variance in taxation revenue to the good, but not highlighted. And I guess, and I don't recall it being highlighted during the year that we were going to receive that much additional money from taxation. I know where it came from. It came from the fact that you had budgeted so much for supplementals and it came in much higher. But it's just, I'm just surprised it wasn't mentioned in the variance report.
It, I guess it's an oversight on my part, but we've been talking about Giant Tiger for quite a while at the additional assessment, and that's what it is, it's supplementary, and it was billed in this quarter.
Yeah.
So that's why it wasn't in previous quarters. But because we've had a lot of conversation about the additional revenue received by Giant Tiger, I didn't highlight it, but it's a pretty obvious where it is coming from.
So when you kind of look at the fact that there was 248,000 of unbudgeted revenue, and then when I look at the first comment under the variance report on the first page, there's a pre-audit surplus of 181,000, now that's projected, I understand that. And there are possible other outstanding invoices still to come. But even if the surplus was 181,000, that's still quite a difference from the 248, 249 additional revenue. So some of the additional revenue was used up in expenses someplace.
Yes, and we know from prior variances, variance reports, that vehicle expenses in public works was a big contributor to the over expenditures.
Deputy Mayor? So are those reports, being my first go on quarterly, are those reports available? And will we be able to see specifically why, you know, those departments went over and used up, you know, what their expenses are and to what degree what they are, really?
For more detail, or is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, more detail, yeah.
The reports, the previous quarterly reports look exactly the same as this, but if there's a specific area that council or committee would like to see, detail, more detail on, it certainly is available.
The way that I, through the chair, understand and think what the mayor is getting at is there's a difference in those two numbers. And we're saying that that difference is caused by overages in those departments. For fairness to, for myself, and especially being new to this process, detail would be good for me. I would like to think if it was my own personal business, I would have that detail if I was spending more than what I had planned to spend. I would have that detail fairly readily, and I know if I took it in and gave it to my numbers guy, he'd want to know why I was spending more than I was bringing in. So for us, it would make sense to me to see why, and if there's a way that we can pinpoint down with budget where we can make some reductions or stop some inefficiencies and have that money to use in other ways. So a more detailed report might get us, or might get me a little more understanding to find some of those inefficiencies.
Counselor Hunter?
I think it's, I can see you maybe want a little more detail, Deputy Mayor, but if you look at the next sheet, all your departments are pretty well booked down in subsections of each department. How each one went over to overhead expenses and vehicle expenses or safety expenses in public works and stuff there. Basically, it's quite a gun, as the mayor says. If everything had been on budget, we should have had 317,000 more than at the end of the year because we had that revenue that wasn't budgeted anyplace in. And we only have 180, so basically, we don't want to, if we hadn't had any more money, we would have been a 140,000 deficit.
That's right, that's my point, yeah.
The whole thing, the budgets and process didn't work in there because departments didn't adhere to what the budget was.
Well, it's difficult to...
Extended circumstance, especially in the roads where we had 100,000 worth of repairs that wasn't budgeted at first, so...
Sometimes it's difficult too because at the end of the first quarter, we're going to get one of these variance reports. So ordinarily, you would say to yourself, well, I'm a quarter of the way through the year, I should be a quarter of the way through my expenditures. But it doesn't always work that way. You know, sometimes you can be a quarter of the way through the year, but you're three-quarters of the way through the money. For example, if you pay your insurance premium all in one shot.
Roads Department is always...
Yeah, especially on snowplow.
They've got a lot of our contracts for roads and stuff that are the big money items. We're not going to get them until the third quarter.
Yeah.
They're going to show up, so...
Okay, are there any other questions now with the variance report here? Because as Counselor Hunter points out, the real meat is in the numbers, the two numbers page, actually four pages of numbers. And the first two pages are the revenue broken down. And then the last two pages, pages three and pages four, are the expenses broken down. And as has been pointed out, one of the big places in public works, overhead expenses have, and I guess this is what I take a look at because now I've got the 2017 numbers to look at and to compare with the 2018 actuals. So overhead expenses in public works went from 593 in 2017 to 715 in 2018, which is a hundred and some thousand dollar swing. And vehicle expenses went from 273 to 357, which is almost another 100,000 swing. And shop expenses went up 15 or so. And roadside maintenance went from 75 to 85, well, that's a 10,000 dollar swing, but which means that we must have done a little bit more roadside maintenance. Let me just see how that compared to budget, well, it was exactly what we planned for budget. Okay, so are there any other questions here? If not, I'm about to move on to the next one. And so now I'm on to five, excuse me, seven E, which is the committee council remuneration report. The act requires that we receive and release this statement of our council expenditures annually. So here we have it, for all the world to see. Are there any questions with the remuneration report? I had some problem when I saw mine because I don't remember being at the Ontario East Economic Development Conference. But I'm worried that maybe we paid for me and I didn't get to go. Could that happen? Could happen, and I think maybe that's my view of what happened. But in any case, are there any questions with the report at all? Hearing none, about to move on, which is number seven F, the status of tax arrears. And here's where the treasurer points out to us that the total properties with tax arrears over two years is 93 accounts. So a lot of people have slipped into arrears. Now, I believe someplace here you're talking about 93 properties had a balance in tax arrears over two years, and the following is the action taken with these outstanding accounts. So you're saying that 34 of them have set up monthly payment plans?
Correct.
Now that's directly with the treasurer?
Yep.
Fifty of them have received a collection letter. Now, what do we do if they haven't responded to the collection letter, the 50 of them?
The collection letter that was sent out on January 16th requested the full payment on or before the 15th of February.
Okay, so that's what it requested.
Right, and failure to do that, either to reach out to the treasurer to set up a plan of free payment, because even at that stage, we're still having conversation, or I'm still open for conversation. But failure to do either to communicate that they want a payment plan or paying the value to get them out of that two-years arrears. Some of them will just pay the one year or the overdue and keep their one year. And I can't stop them from not doing that because the regulation is, has to be two years. They, if they don't pay to get themselves out of the situation, then they're sent off to a third-party registration company called Real Tax.
Okay, but here's my question. If they're two years in arrears at December the 31st, 18, we can put them in registration on January the 1st if we choose to.
We certainly could.
Do we give them the option of paying that one full year back? Do we actually give them that option?
No, when I send the letter out in January, I ask for full payment of the account.
Now, suppose they came back with just one year payment, would you accept it?
I would.
You would, eh? And then, so then they would only be one year in arrears.
Right.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
What I'm trying to do is...
There's a bit of leeway there.
Yeah, what I'm trying to do is encourage a monthly payment plan, which is certainly more, you know, budget-wise, it's easier for individuals to get themselves out of something if they can pay a smaller amount or an agreeable amount each month. I definitely try to get them on a pre-authorized plan so that we're pulling the payment as opposed to relying on them paying the township. And for the most part, we're getting good success with that.
I see. Okay, so then out of these 93, nine of them now have been sent to Real Tax to go into registration then?
Yes.
Okay, and we have one that's actually in registration, the advertisements are in the paper.
Yes, that's gone past the year, and so now it's in, for, up for tax sale.
Right, it's up for tax sale.
Correct.
Yes, Deputy Mayor? So just for clarity for me, so the one that's for sale on February 27th went through the process that you just outlined this time last year? So you would have sent them a letter on the 15th of January or something?
Originally, the setup is that we send a September letter. That is indicating that their status at the end of the year would put them in that situation. And so we make a letter that encourages them to, you know, again, reach out to the township for payment plans or pay off their balance. So it's the September letter sent first, and then the follow-up layer in January is that reminder layer, this is urgent and, you know, you need to... And then it is, there's a deadline, specific deadline of the February 15th, which is a month from the day that I send the letter, saying, you know, unfortunately, we've come to the end, so...
Counselor Dillaboll?
Mr. Chair, out of the 50 letters that you sent out in January, how many responded? Because you only have, what, two more days?
I've had several pay off. I don't know the exact numbers because my tax clerk actually looks after this to me, and she would come to me, she'll come to me later this week with the actual numbers of how many people, you know, are still in that situation because we'll have to sit down and, you know, make our... down and, you know, make our next determination of what we, how we do, who we have to send off and, you know, create the files to send through to Real Tax, so. But I think we've had a fair amount of them actually.
So you don't know if it's twenty-five, fifty percent?
Not, offhand, no.
Okay, but let's suppose when the time is up and the tax clerk has had an opportunity to put everything together, let's suppose now that out of the fifty that got letters, ten of them have not responded in any way, shape, or form. Now those ten can then be sent directly to Real Tax.
Correct.
And for tax registration and sale of property.
Right.
Once they go to Real Tax for tax registration, they then have one full year to pay up.
Correct.
Everything up to date, complete.
Yes.
Okay. If they miss that year.
That's when it goes to tax sale.
That's when it goes to tax sale. Okay, are there any other questions with this? Counselor Hunter?
On those tax sales, they still will have the right right up to the day of closing of the tenders to pay that off, though.
Through the Chair, yes, that's correct, right up to the day of the.
Before the sale closes and pay up.
Correct.
How many times does that happen, though?
Oh, I've seen it happen.
Yeah?
Yep.
I think when we had a low interest rate for taxes.
Okay, so I'm moving on to seven G, which is the loan paid for Greenfield, and I wasn't aware that this loan was up for renewal. So it's up for renewal on February the fifth, that's actually passed, eh? So they want us to pay it out early, so there's a recommendation here that we pay it out early, and then Greenfield just follows through with their regular payments. Now how do you handle that? Theoretically, that just flushes out of your books by ninety days, well, by the end of May.
Yes.
By the end of the half.
Yeah, so the last payment that was taken with the original loan was February fifth. The next payment to be paid is March fifth.
Right.
So we have an option of renewing and paying just a monthly fee on March fifth with a new rate, or we have an ability to pay out the amount that's outstanding, which is for March, April, May.
Okay.
Which is the sixty-one thousand dollars.
So I don't know if there's further discussion here, but I see a recommendation in front of me, and the Chair is looking for discussion on the recommendation.
Just asking a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Just for clarity for myself, as of now, if we go with the recommendation, Greenfield will pay twenty-six thousand, forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents for the next three payments, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Their schedule is twenty-six thousand for March and April, and their main payment was a reduced amount. We don't know the exact number, ten thousand.
Seventy-nine thousand, forty-seven.
Yes.
So we're going to pay out sixty-one, they're going to pay us back?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-eight, one, two.
Okay. Any further questions? Because the Chair is looking for action on the recommendation, looking for a mover and a second. Okay, Counselor Hunter, moving, seconder?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Cameron, second. Those in favor of the recommendation, please signify.
All right.
Motion is carried. Recommendation to Counsel. All right, now I'm at seven H, which is an extension agreement with Afzalzada. And I guess my question here, and I've read the briefing note, is this individual is looking for an agreement. Now, I thought these agreements were with the Treasurer.
No, through the municipal, the extension agreements have to be approved by Council. It allows a person, so this particular property is in tax registration.
Oh, it's in registration?
Correct, and so rather than the one-year to pay, Council approves a two-year. But within that agreement, he paid, the individual has to pay the arrears as well as the current taxes. If there's a default on either one of those, then it automatically, there's no other extensions beyond that, they get put back into Real Tax, like, basically this would put them on hold with Real Tax and gives them that extra year to pay. But they have to follow that, this particular agreement to pay the arrears plus the current taxes during that two-year period.
And if they, and so they've got one year in registration, which is three hundred and sixty-five days, if they, if we give them an agreement and they default on the, if we give them an agreement, it puts things on hold. If they default on the agreement, even the first payment, they're back into counting three sixty-five again.
Correct.
Okay, question?
Yes, is the, is the person mentioned here, is he the, is he living in the residence or is, does he live somewhere else? And this is a rental unit?
I believe it's a rental unit, yes.
Okay. And the second question is, there's a recommendation here that we do prepare the bylaw for the extension agreement, but have we done a credit rating? Do we know that this individual is creditworthy?
Well, there's never been a reason to do that in the past. The agreement is really just an effort to, basically, it's Council giving the individual a little extra time to pay this, and it's just an effort to try to get them to solve their arrears.
Yes, but we're not obligated to give the agreement.
Council or committee is not obligated to extend the extension at all, the agreement, you know, but it is, it is an option within the municipal, they file to see if Council's willing to give that person the additional year.
See, I would hesitate, I would hesitate to not give an agreement unless I had a reason. If the creditworthiness, if I had a credit rating that was forty or something like that from one of the credit rating agencies, then I would feel that I had a reason not to extend it, not to extend an agreement. But I just don't feel that I have a reason not to extend the agreement right now. I know that we're secure either way, how you look at it, because the tax registration comes back into play. So anyway, I have a recommendation in front of me, Chair is looking for, yes, Counselor Dilavon?
I recommend that we do extend them another year.
Okay, so you're moving acceptance of the recommendation?
Me bet.
Okay, that's Counselor Dilavon, and Counselor Dilavon looking for a seconder. Does he have a seconder? No, doesn't find a seconder yet.
Yes, I will, I'll second him.
Counselor Cameron seconds.
Yes.
The recommendation. So now we're discussing the recommendation, before I call a vote on it, I would ordinarily not have called a discussion, but I'm going to call a discussion because I sensed some hesitation to find a seconder here. Does anybody wish to speak either for or against this recommendation?
I don't know, I have, not really say the against, but I'm not quite up for it when it's mentioned that this is a rental property, if this is a business property, the rents can be, the renters have been paying them the rent on it, he hasn't been paying us the taxes on it, I'm not sure where we should be extending too much time to him when he's collecting rent. If he's a person that's been living in their home and maybe fell a little short on time, I wouldn't hesitate at all to extend it to a leasing property. And why, the renter obviously has been paying his rent, but he's still got, which why he hasn't paid us our share of taxes or that rent, so.
Well, that's an interesting way of looking at it. Anybody else want to make comment here? That's, you know, and I was looking for a credit rating, but maybe that's the answer right there?
That's what I did, not the credit rating, why he didn't pay, he must have been getting paid, so.
Did you want to end, Deputy?
Yeah, yeah. Very much in agreement with what John said and maybe.
Counselor Hunter?
Counselor Hunter, sorry. And maybe to take that just a tiny bit further, I know we've discussed vacancy rebates, that sort of thing, had other discussions with not knowing whether there actually is a renter there, and it's a vacant building that's not in the greatest of repair, or something like that, I don't know, that would influence that as well.
Did you want to end?
I just don't know enough with this, this situation to make a decision on it, you know, like you say, whether it's a rental and he's collecting rent, or what the status of it is.
Is he having problems getting rent from the? Well, let me turn to the Treasurer here just to see if the Treasurer has more information. Do we know whether there's a tenant in place?
I can't confirm or deny that, I don't know.
Okay, so we don't know that?
I think there's been tenants in the past, I don't know if there's a current tenant in.
Okay, and of course, we have no way of knowing whether the tenant has been a good tenant or a bad tenant, but we have right to assume.
Still a business.
Still a business. Well, so we have an interesting discussion on this recommendation. I think I'm going to call the question and let the votes fall where they may, and then the Treasurer will be guided by the result of the vote. And I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each person to kind of, rather than just, well, let's try. Those in favor of the recommendation, show your hands, please. Okay, I have one. Those opposed to the recommendation, show your hands, please. So I have one, two, three, four, five, so the recommendation fails. So unfortunately, you're going to have to tell this gentleman that too many unanswered questions. So now I'm on to a seven I, which is the Council Staff Relations Policy Bylaw. So we have a draft of a Council Staff Relations Policy, and we have a recommendation here that Committee recommends that Council adopt, now it really should say, the Council Staff Relations Policy as attached, because this is the draft that's attached, right? So, any discussion on the policy itself?
I'm thinking on the policy itself, Mister Mayor, but I do have a question.
Okay, so I'm going to just point out one, I'm going to call it a wording for clarification. So on the first page, where it says, the first point, number one, code of conduct for members of Council. The code of conduct for members of Council establishes the ethical behavior expected of members of the township. It really should say, members of the Council of the Township, just for the sake of clarity, I think. And that was the only wordsmithing that I could see. And other than that, I'm prepared to support this, but you had a question?
Yes, and it's just strictly wordsmithing for clarification, a code, the first paragraph, code for members of Council, the, it would be the second paragraph, members acknowledge that only Council has, or should that say has, a whole has, or should that be as? Just a typo.
Should be as a whole?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm glad you caught that one. Okay, so a couple wordsmithings, anything else here? I have a recommendation in front of me that's been slightly amended, that Committee recommends that Council adopt the Council Staff Relations Policy as attached. I'm looking for a mover and a second. Counselor Hunter, and seconded by, I'll take Counselor Cameron. And those in favor of the motion, please signify. Motion is carried. Okay, so now I'm on to item seven J, which is the land bank sale of properties, at last, finally at last. After a number of months of heavy lobbying.
It still might take a year.
It still might take more than a year, exactly. Now, what's interesting to me here is that this is stage one, we're being notified in these three emails of stage one, and actually, I think they call it stage three, don't they? Yes. This stage of circulation of surplus government realty is known as stage three circulation. Infrastructure Ontario, on behalf of the Ministry of Consumer, Ministry of Government and Consumer Services, is sending that email via IO's Realty Circulation portal to identify surplus realty for your review and consideration. And later on, it says that the township has until March the fourth to indicate whether we have any interest in any of these properties. Now there are three emails, and each email addresses or lists a different batch, if I can put it that way, of properties. The total three batches are shown on the large sheet. And just for your reference, on the large sheet, the P is the parcel number of the land holding, or of the realty. The blue hatched area with the M in front of it indicates that there's a lease in place for that portion of the realty. And the B numbers signify the numbers of the buildings that are located in that area on that property. So we're getting a full glimpse of what they intend to put for sale. My concern is that it appears as though they're dumping the whole ten thousand acres all at once, and, but we don't know that because we don't, they haven't signaled to us what their process would be. But the first order of business is, do we have an interest in any of these properties? And you'll notice that the CIO clerk, who's absent tonight, Ms. McKinstry, has a recommendation that the municipality does not express an interest in acquiring any of the parcels because, number one, it's full market value, and number two, just delays the process. So I need some discussion on that item. Okay, I have Counselor Hunter, then Deputy Mayor.
Just one question that I want, I don't know if anybody has the answer to it. On all these batches that are listed, they all have a holding cost, price attached to each, I don't know what, understand what that holding cost price is supposed to be that's attached to, or whether that's a, because some of them don't have anything attached to them, so I, first I thought it was a minimum cost or something they were putting on it, but then that doesn't justify it because there's some of them that hasn't got any.
Okay, so to get the answer to that question, I'm going to turn to our accountant. What does the holding cost refer to?
No idea.
What?
I have no idea. I don't know whether it's the, you know, for instance, the first one is a hundred and sixty-two point five two acres, is that the price per acre? Or?
No, it's the holding cost of the parcel. It's the holding cost of the parcel, sixty-one, twenty-two, one. Now to me, the holding cost means, and I don't know whether I'm right or not, this way I interpret it, I think that the government has spent three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents on that piece of property. That's in addition to over and above what they paid to buy it.
So it's like advertising a property for tax sale. You advertise that the bid has to be at least so many dollars, which in fact is the amount of taxes owing.
But the holding cost is, does not have any reference to market value, and these places, these properties have to be sold at market value.
I was, I was wondering, I didn't add them up, I don't know what our total grant and lieu is that we get on all these properties, but I'm wondering if this holding cost, if what, make sure that the grant and lieu was, we were paying over a hook each year on that property, the total cost of the whole of it in here.
That's interesting. I don't think bears any relation, to be honest with you. Well, grant and lieu, do we invoice the province grant on, yeah, we invoice for all grant and lieu, don't we?
Yeah, we send a tax bill to everybody, would be the province as well, yep.
So the province would be getting a tax bill on these, so they are paying their taxes. Are they paying their taxes? How can they be paying taxes on 10,000 acres over this period of time?
They pay a payment in lieu of taxes, they don't pay the taxes itself. So we'll send a tax bill based on what the value is that MPAC has put on the property, and then we're provided with a schedule of what they pay per rule number.
Would these, would these properties have assessed values?
Yes, MPAC assesses all values regardless of who owns it.
We had, from there, when I served in council back in, I think it was around 83 and 84, we had two or three Queens, I believe their Queens University students did a revenue impact study for the township on this 10,000 acres that had been sitting there for 20, 25 years then. And at that time, it was close to a million dollars a year, they estimated that landbank was costing the township in lost revenue and lost development.
A million a year. Which means to me that they were probably not paying anywhere near the reasonable tax rate. Well, I know I, from my point of view, I would like to get this land back into production, but I just really worry that it's going to sour the marketplace, if I can put it that way. Although, some of this land is now been overrun by beavers, some of it has grown up in brush, but the leased parcels, the blues, are, they're basically cropped. Nobody's paying leases unless they're built and growing crops on those lands, and I can recognize a few of them, and almost know who the leaseholder is. But when you look at a parcel, like, I'm gonna point out the one that's at the top right of the map, parcel number 65263, and you can see that there are actually three leases on that. And you notice that the lease doesn't extend to the full northern boundary. You can almost bet that that's a swamp, and whoever the farmer was that took out the lease was smart enough not to lease land that wasn't arable. So, need some discussion on the recommendation that the municipality does not express any interest in acquiring any of the parcels. Deputy Mayor?
So, having just read that, and then looking at the legend that is township area of interest, on the bottom left corner, there's P65074, that is outlined, as an area on my map of township area of interest. So while the recommendation says we don't have any, the map says otherwise, so I'm a little confused.
Acting CIO?
Well, I will attempt to clarify, but probably confuse a little more. What we're anticipating is, back in 2013, I believe we needed to show an interest in a particular parcel to get in with discussions with Infrastructure Ontario at that time, and I believe that that was the, potentially the smallest parcel of land that we could show an interest on. So although it says interest, I believe that's back several years.
I guess we did, that, I knew that they wanted to have the unders to show an interest in this office, so.
I can't say 100%.
I just have one question there, too, on this, it says, if our mayor read out, this is a level three, I guess we're at.
Stage three.
I assume that means that all the ministries have already been circulated, whether the mayor have to show the interest that has come to us now?
Well, it says, "The Management Board Directive requires that surplus government realty be circulated to specified entities outside the Government of Ontario, so that they may express interest in acquiring surplus government realty." I think we can assume from this that inside the Government of Ontario has been widely circulated.
That's what I said, the government ministries must have, we were worried at the time we asked about it, but Ministry of Natural Resources might come up and claim some of this land, so obviously they must have, we.
Well, because, because the province only disposes at market value, even those other ministries have gotta come up with the cash.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder what would happen if, you know, just resolve the holding cost, if a phone call were made, just inquiring as to what they mean by that.
Well, I know before she left, the CIO indicated to me that she had made several inquiries, because when this whole issue came up about two years ago, we did have a number of contacts with phone numbers, and we had established a bit of a relationship inside Infrastructure Ontario. Now, the CIO had indicated to me that she made a number of inquiries. I should have been more specific, I just assumed that she was trying to contact those individuals that we had established a relationship with. But the long and the short of it was, whether by email or by phone, she got no response. Unless you have an update?
I do not, I'm just going by the, by the action items, that indicated that she, that she has made several attempts, so it appears that there's radio silence.
Yeah. Now, and I do recall that that small little parcel that Deputy Mayor Deschamps has brought to our attention, 65074, I do recall that we picked a small, small, tiny parcel, and said, "Yeah, we have an interest in that parcel," and that was just to keep us in the game. I don't know whether we need to do that again or not, but again, it doesn't hurt to send an expression of interest by March the 4th.
I kinda agree with your first statement there, that get out of the way and let it get, move on ahead as quick as it can, and not by us being threatening, and we're interested or something, not hold it up there or something.
Everybody sort of agree with that? Don't get in the way here, it's special.
Interest always an offer to buy it, it's just saying, "We're interested."
Well, that's true.
And you don't have to go, you can go down to the 11th hour and then say you don't want it.
Yes, that's true. But, well, I think if you were gonna send a letter saying that we have an interest, you would sort of get right to the quick of the matter and say, "We noticed that that parcel has a holding cost of X, would you please tell us the market You will put them right on the spot. What is the market value that you're asking for that price, for that parcel? Just to see what they say. Mr. Mayor, where is exactly that parcel? It's on Cedar Grove Road, and it's, it's just west of the former, what is?
BP rail line that runs down through, and under the 401.
Yes, but. Richard Christie. Richard Christie is 65269. That is his parents' farm. And you see the piece just north of 65269, the blank area that's not owned by the province? That is owned by Richard Christie. And so this little triangle is west of him. And what are we looking at, acreage? We have no idea. Oh, wait a minute now, just a minute. If we can find 65074 on the list, it'll tell us. 65074.
There it is, here, it's 18, 18.00 acres.
Okay, so there it is exactly.
And it happens to have that price on it of 189.1, 1890.
Where's that at?
Right here, 65074.
65, 65074?
Yes.
Where do you find 65074?
Well, it's the third one down on page three, of page three of the second allotment.
65074, 18 acres, it's got a holding cost of $1,890.62. What is your asking price? So is there anybody in favor of sending an expression, in spite of the recommendation? Is there anybody in favor of sending a letter indicating that we would like to know what the asking price is on, we have an interest, we'd like to know what the asking price is?
I would support that.
What do you think, John? No, excuse me, Counselor?
I just assume get, just get out of the way, not, I think, create a, just gonna be letters back and forth again, instead of, just get ahead and listen, put them all in the market.
Stay clear, Mayor Hunter?
That's right.
Acting CIO?
So through the chair, we really don't have an interest in that property? And I'm quite sure that upon the CIO's return, that she will get to the bottom of what holding cost.
Okay, that's a good way of looking at it, yeah. Okay, and if we do, we can file later. Okay, so now I'm looking for direction as to how we deal with the recommendation. Looking for a mover and a seconder, you can always repeat it. Okay, I have Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, and looking for a seconder. Counselor Cameron seconding. About to call the question on the recommendation. Those in favor, please signify. Motion is carried. So that's where that goes. And so now, I've finished the land bank sale of properties. And eight on the agenda, council inquiries, notices of motion. Anybody have anything to bring forward? Nothing?
Could I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'll make it brief and quick. In reading and listening to Mr. Marshall's response to our meeting about the no parking on County Road 21, I decided to go back and watch our entire council meeting over. And I think, myself included, I was surprised that some of my body language on camera, some of my side talks on camera, and some of my comments on camera. And I think it'd be wise, I'm glad that he brought it to my attention, so that my conduct at the table will be a little more respectful and a little, and a little bit cleaner. Just a conversation, or just an observation for myself in reference back to his letter.
Did we not look good?
I'm not saying that, you can go back and, and watch it in its entirety for yourself. I will still laugh lots, but I'll certainly be more aware and definitely that I am constantly being viewed by the public, even though they're not here.
Fair comment, thank you very much. Food for thought. Any other council inquiries, notice of motion, comments? I'm going to the mayor's report. I just have a couple of quick things here. I just wanna recognize that at a previous meeting, I did refer to the fact that I had forgotten to thank Deputy Mayor Deschamps for attending at the swearing-in ceremony for MP Barrett. And at our last meeting, he did give us a little report on that, I just wanna apologize one more time. I think I have done a county council budget update. ED19, everybody's aware that the Environmental Review Tribunal has released their decision. The decision is available, I would urge everyone to read it. County council has not put it on an agenda yet, and it will be probably coming onto the agenda for February the 21st in the form of a staff report. And the staff report will probably be accompanied by a briefing note from the legal council, and so it'll probably be dealt with in camera. Just a reminder to everyone that there are still, there's still a major issue to be decided. And that is, and I think I mentioned this at the previous meeting, there are still two complaints that have been lodged with the minister about the provisional certificate of approval. And those complaints have asked the minister to review the certificate, and if possible, to revoke it. So the minister has done nothing with those complaints until the Environmental Review Tribunal released its report, or its decision. And now, that other process will unfold. The minister and the ministry will now go back and determine whether or not there are sufficient changes on the landscape to justify revoking the original certificate of approval. I just wanna mention another thing. Greenfield Global, I was asked to go to a meeting at the plant a week ago, is proposing a Earth Day Cleanout for April the 22nd. And they have asked me, will the township be involved? They're proposing an Earth Day cleanup, a one-hour kind of thing over the noon hour for their employees, and they've had it all mapped out, the area around their location, where they're gonna ask their employees to clean the ditches. And they've asked me to send letters of support about their project to all of their neighbors in the industrial park. So tonight, I've just signed 21 letters that are going to all the neighbors in the industrial park, asking them to participate in this initiative led by Greenfield Global on April 22nd. And by the way, the only support that I offered was that in previous campaigns like this, the township provided pickup of the garbage bags that were brought up to the shoulders of the road. So I thought we could do that much again, and that's kind of where it sits. Now, you look like you know more than I do, no? Okay. I just wanna, I think I did talk about improvements to the paramedic service. The only other two things is that a previous meeting, I talked about the importance, and we're required under the Police Act to prepare something called a Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. And that report is to be prepared and submitted within a certain deadline, which has been somewhat adjusted in the last few days. Now, we were wrestling at the township level as to how we would go about preparing that kind of a report. But at the county council committee of the whole meeting a couple Tuesdays ago, we had a presentation from the Lanark Leeds-Grenville Health Unit, and they've been contracted by the City of Ganonakwe and the City of Brockton, excuse me, to write the plan for those two cities. Thank you. And so they have offered to do the plan for the county. And, excuse me, just a minute, until I, I think you'd like to get some relief here. Thanks very much, excuse me, just a minute. I don't know what happened. So don't get the paramedics. I can't afford the cost. So the long and the short of it was that the county committee recommended to the county council that we engage the Lanark Leeds and Grenville Health Unit to do this study for us, prepare this plan. So what is still to be decided is how much they're gonna charge, and how that cost will be allocated back to the townships. So I'm just putting you in the picture. And that's all I have for the mayor's report at this time. Item number 10 on the agenda is a question period. We have one gentleman that's been very patient here all evening. I can't see that far, is that it?
Yeah.
Hi, Ed, how are you tonight?
Good, and you?
Good. Do you have any questions?
Uh, I mean, maybe about the land bank sale, but all the emails that are in here, they're pretty vague on everything pretty well, but, so what does that mean for current users or renters of this land?
And that's a good question, because we don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, yeah, I know it doesn't have many answers in it.
And just one thing I should point out to you. When we went around this, this trip about two years ago, we did make it very clear to the people from Infrastructure Ontario that were here, that certain leaseholders, all of their leaseholders, had held this land and cropped this land over a period of some 20, 30 years. And we felt that some kind of preference should be given to those leaseholders. Now, whether that fell on deaf ears, or whether they'll provide you with some sort of priority, I don't know. I know that your family has some leased land.
Yeah, and just another question about it. Like, I don't believe all of it is even up for sale. At least the black and white copy I have, only the highlighted parts are actually listed in this, because I just looked at a few of the numbers of some of these lots that don't seem to be leased or rented by anyone. They don't seem to be listed in here as.
Okay, so the three emails, and I haven't taken the time to cross-check the three emails that list the parcels against this large map.
Yeah.
I haven't done that, so I don't know whether, I mean, the three emails clearly indicate the parcels that are for sale. Rebecca?
All of the highlighted yellows, we went through, those are all the portions being up for sale.
The yellows?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and so I don't have the yellows on this copy?
It's in your package copy.
Oh, the yellow, do you have the yellow map?
Yeah, yeah, from the stack here. It's basically a swath straight through the middle and anything west of 416 pretty well.
Basically, is it not, the yellows are basically on Roussville Road, are they not?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, so the yellows are the ones that appear in the three emails.
Correct.
So you really need both maps to look at this together, right? I see. Thanks for pointing that out. Any other questions we can help you with?
No, no, I mean, I don't understand, you guys have the answers from what they've told you?
And I don't know who the contacts are personally at Infrastructure Ontario, but I suspect that sometime after March the 4th, we'll be hearing more.
Okay.
Or you can go through your federation, and they will probably be able to give you better direction.
Okay.
Is there anything else to bring before the council? We have no closed session, the chair's looking for the motion to adjourn. Mr. Robertson, and does he have a seconder, please? Deputy, or Councilor Hunter, those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion is carried.